Good evening and welcome to the work session business meeting of January 9th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to start by opening up the meeting to the public to speak on any of the listed agenda items. Mr. Ferraro.
Coming out strong in the new year. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you.
I was going to ask if the board would...
Joe, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Joe Ferraro and I live in Putnam Valley. I was going to ask the board to take a position on people leaving their Christmas lights up this week, but seeing as you have a new policy on the docket to review that seems to be out of line, so...
It's not a Christmas tree. It's not a tree light policy.
In all seriousness, I know you'll probably address this. I just want to make sure that when we look at this, that this, talk about this new policy, that if it's, it looked like online and it was part of West PUD's effort to kind of, or at least their help was, was put into place for it. I just want to be, I think about all the possible ways the policy could be used as a wedge in ways that the district mayor may not want it to be used, primarily kind of the extracurricular stuff that the district does, like honoring veterans or first responders that are not necessarily academic or connected to, although, you know, a lot of the nice add-ons that we do as a district, that when we review the policy, that we look through all possible ways that somebody could say, "You're violating your own policy by doing these things that are not necessarily educationally focused." So that's kind of what I wanted to make sure that at least was on the radar. I'm sure West PUD and everybody's looked at it, but that's, I look at it when I'm thinking about people or persons or organizations that might want to use the policy that you adopt as a wedge.
Thank you. It always helps to have another, to look at it from another side. Okay, so we'll start with the consent agenda?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve consent agenda items number two through seven.
Second. Questions or comments?
The consent agenda includes approval of the prior meeting's minutes, an updated substitute listing for the school year, approval of additional or unpaid work hours for various staff members, approval for sale, auction, or disposal of building and grounds equipment, extending the long-term substitute position of Cameron Cruzy through the end of the year, and approval of CSE/CPSC placements.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. Reports? We're gonna, is that right? Yeah, okay. Students. So we'd like to welcome Marissa's, I'm sorry, say your name for me.
Marissa Caratoro.
Say your last name again.
Caratoro.
Well, thank you. So, we always love to have student voice and student opinions, and so we're so glad that you're joining us. So, welcome. So, do you have a report? You and Haley.
Yes. So, yesterday was the high school chorus concert featuring the concert chorus and the mixed choir, and next Wednesday, January 15th, is the high school band concert showcasing the concert band and the wind ensemble. Tomorrow is a big day for our seniors with information going out about prom and how to start buying tickets and looking at all of those prices, and an interest meeting is being held for a girls' flag football team to introduce a new varsity sport to our high school. IB dance is having a master class with the Rockettes next week on Friday to learn from professionals and help them with their submissions coming up for their IB tests. And James Apostalico, a senior, has just received a scholar athlete award for his academic and basketball skills, and he's the first student to do so since 2009.
Nice.
Outstanding.
Outstanding. So, prom?
Yeah.
Are you excited?
It's exciting. It's, our prom is going to be June 12th at the Grand View in Poughkeepsie.
Nice.
The Grand View.
That's a beautiful spot. Okay, well, thank you very much. Dr. Luft, did they steal your thunder?
They usually do. It's all right. First, I want to begin by welcoming Marissa. Normally, we see her up on the stage next to Haley, so we know both of them well. So, much of my updates this evening, I wanted to focus on the upcoming capital facilities project. Right here, you see on the website, we, there's a link right on the main page, and there's lots of information that's accessible from this main page, including the poster, other handouts, links to presentations. What I really want to do is just provide a quick summary as to how we ended up here. Our website's not working so well right now.
It's spinning.
Yeah, I had a trouble doing it here, too. So, this work is really the culmination of two years of work that began with the convening of a facilities planning committee, which is constituents from across the community, teachers, parents, community members, staff members, all coming together. We reviewed a wealth of information, including our five-year long-range plans. We did building tours. We developed priority lists. We started putting budgetary numbers to those priority lists, which means lots of things get eliminated because you spend lots of money really fast. But this project is the final work of that group that went on for two years. The most important piece of the entire project is the fact that it is tax neutral. So what that means is, by virtue of using several different revenue sources, including $9.2 million of state aid, $2.5 million for our capital reserve fund, as well as replacing retiring debt, that we're able to accomplish the entirety of this project without raising taxes. It's not to say that your taxes will never go up. Our regular general fund budget will likely result in some tax levy increase, but that tax levy increase will not be attributed to this facilities project, which will be cost-neutral. Information's available everywhere, all over the website. We have another listening hour coming up next Wednesday before the fourth grade concert, no, before the...
High school.
The high school concert.
High school.
Or something else before the fourth grade concert. It's a different meeting. There's lots of meetings. So, next Wednesday before the high school band concert, there'll be a listening hour here at the high school upstairs, so anyone who has, would like more information or has any questions, we encourage them to stop by. And a mailer will be going out to every address in Putnam Valley within the next week or so. I believe they're going out tomorrow, so whoever it takes to mail it, deliver them from there. And again, that mailer has a ton of information. Absentee ballots are available on the website or by contacting our district clerk, Maureen Bellino. And I encourage everyone to seek the information they need to make an informed decision and cast a vote on January 28th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the elementary school.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jeremy, can you go over why it has to be that day? Why it's in January?
Sure. So, the timing of the vote coincides with when the construction must begin in order for us to bring this project online at the same time a previous project is being paid off. That's what allows us to complete this work without raising taxes. So in order for that to happen, our construction start date has to be the summer of '26. Being a school district, the obvious construction period for us is really July and August. So, $14 million of work completed in two months in the summer of '26, and two more months in the summer of '27 is a significant amount of work to accomplish in a very short period of time. We don't have a year-round construction cycle. We have to have our buildings open and accessible at the end of June and back open and accessible in the beginning of September. So it's a very short period of time where a tremendous amount of work needs to get done. So in order for that to happen, it's about an 18-month process from voter approval to use the funds to breaking ground. So if we do the math, that brings us back to the winter of '25 for when the vote must be held. I know there's some inconveniences for some of having a winter vote, ourselves included, right? It could snow that day, the vote still goes on, and it's our obligation to ensure that our campus is accessible and voters can make their way to the polls to cast their ballot. So the reason for that is, in order to start in the summer of '26, we have to have a vote that is in the winter of '25. If we wait until May, that brings our construction start date into September, which costs us an entire year because we can't start construction in September in an occupied building. So that's the reason for the winter vote date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about the project? So, I'm sorry, I skipped my first part. I did want to start by wishing everyone a happy and healthy new year because this is the first time we're back since then. We continue to have debriefs and follow-ups from a security incident that happened prior to break, and I didn't want to lose sight on those efforts continuing. We continue to work with the sheriff's department as well as our school security consulting company. Our buildings are scheduling their next round of trainings, as well as our district emergency response team, and that work continues as always. We also are looking at the possibility of another energy performance contract, which includes the installation of more solar panels at the elementary school. So the way those projects work is essentially the savings that's generated from the sustainable energy or green energy is used to pay off the cost to install it. So that's still in the very beginning stages, but that's something that we are continuing to explore to find our, to find ways to make ourselves less dependent on outside utilities.
I thought we had maxed out the roof space where we could put solar panels at the elementary school?
We max out the roof space that's not, that's end of life. We don't consider a roof to be, until it's ready to be replaced.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't rip up a new roof to put solar panels in.
Okay.
So that work typically coincides with when a roof needs to be replaced.
Okay.
That's the opportunity. We also wouldn't, if a roof's five years from being replaced, we wouldn't put solar panels on it because then that increases the cost. We have to take the solar panels back off in order to fix the roof.
Okay.
So we're looking at a wing of the elementary school that's, it's actually out of warranty now, but the roof itself, knock on wood, is not having any issues. But we know that could change at any time, so we're trying to line up when that roof needs to be replaced, an opportunity to replace the roof and install solar panels without there being any cost to the taxpayer. Because essentially, the savings of the solar panels would pay for the replacement of the roof. And again, it's, it's not a done deal. It's something that we met with a company right after break, but it's something we're over break. It's something that we continue to explore. So, we hosted a family holiday potluck dinner, and I want to thank our community liaisons for putting that together. Maria and Judy, they did a fantastic job. There was a great turnout, much, many different options of food to choose from. They had some outside vendors come in and share some of the resources they can offer to our community, and it's something that I expect will continue year over year and hopefully continue to see more and more support from our community. We had many concerts. Our middle school had their concerts. Our elementary school had their winter sing-along. We had our high school choral concert. Next week is the band concert. We welcomed our Putnam Valley high school alumni back for breakfast up in the library. Then they had the opportunity to speak with our current seniors about what life in college is like. I don't know if I should be happy or sad to report, not much has changed in the many years since I graduated from college. Lots of comments about the food, choosing your roommates, sleeping arrangements, lack of privacy, and what a waste of money it is to buy all the textbooks, which is very sad, but was definitely the case when I was there as well. Make sure you need the book before you spend all the money on it. So, also along to those capital projects I mentioned before, we continue to have meetings. We've had faculty meetings at each of the buildings. We met with the PTA last evening. We've held Q&amp;A sessions at each of the buildings. We have had a listening hour and another one scheduled for next week. There's a mailer going out to every household in Putnam Valley. We have trifles that'll be available in public spaces throughout the community. There's posters in the buildings for all the activities, youth basketball, high school sports, everything that happens every time there's a concert or play, anything that's going on in the buildings, there's posters available for the community to see. And that's it for my recent events. Some of the upcoming events we have, I mentioned before, next week is our high school band concert, and the week after that is the fourth grade concerts. Wednesdays are a very popular day for concerts around here. And that's all I got right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to start our presentations. The first presentation is our 2025-26 budget presentation. So...
Good evening, everyone. It's me again. I'm going to lose my voice. So this is really the kickoff for our budget season, and I'm really going to do a quick introduction, and I'm really going to turn this over to Dr. Grace Chan, our new assistant superintendent for business administration, and she's really going to lead the show throughout the budget development process. So I'm just going to start with a quick reminder of, as always, our budget is built around our district vision and core values, so child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future, and our core values, community, opportunity, resiliency, and empowerment. Those are the conversations we have throughout the budgeting process to ensure that we're putting our money where our priorities are, and these are really what we use to guide those decisions. A very not-inclusive list of some of our priorities. We wanted just to sort of touch some of the big-ticket items that we anticipate on supporting during the, get ready for this, 25-26 school year. The number's getting too high to comprehend. So, as always, we're looking for ways to find new teacher leadership opportunities. We're continuing our investment in the science of reading, so we've done a tremendous amount of work over the past several years, investing in our scholastic reading program, as well as foundations and the Hagerty Program. We continue our expansions of the middle years, the IB middle years program. Our middle school is scheduled for authorization this spring, likely end of March, beginning of April, and our high school just received their confirmation that they are now a candidacy school for the middle years program. So, as was our plan all along, as the middle school comes online, the high school begins their work, likely in two or three years, the high school will then be looking to come online, and that'll offer our students, technically 612 in Putnam Valley, realistically, it's a 512 IB continuum for students beginning in fifth grade of the middle school, straight through their high school experience. And really, it's our belief that the middle years program will better prepare our students for whatever depth they go into the diploma program here at the high school. We continue our work on alignment of math instruction, utilizing programs that are transition seamlessly from grade to grade. DBT, dialectical behavior therapy, is something that we began this year that will continue next year, again, trying to get to the root cause of issues, specifically student behavior issues, and really making connections with students. Work on writing continuum from grades K through 12. That's work that Jackie's leading with teacher leaders throughout the buildings, that, making sure that we're providing students with prerequisite skills for the grade before to be successful in what is ultimately a very writing-intensive program once you get into the high school. Focusing on culture, we have Dr. Holly will be coming in to speak at upcoming superintendent's meeting. We continue our future of education work around generative AI, artificial intelligence, and advanced learning technologies. I know we've provided several updates on that. That work will continue. Continuing our focus on executive functioning, this is something that we don't think this personally, not you two, but some students, not board reps, are lacking, executive functioning skills. It's feedback we get from parents, it's feedback we get from teachers, it's feedback we get from students themselves. It was actually a focal point of the alumni when they came back. There was a lot of conversation about time management, not procrastinating, they're going to give you a month to do it, don't wait till, I won't name names, but I can picture who was saying it, right? Don't wait till the last minute to do the project you had a month to do. So, again, executive function, extremely important, starting at early grade levels, but certainly more so as you approach adulthood. Restorative practices and behavioral monitoring, this is something that we continue to see, not in Putnam Valley, but across the region. Students and schools, there is a mental health crisis, a lot of it focused on social media, cell phones. As much as I appreciate the governor's efforts, I don't think banning cell phones in schools is going to fix the problem because students use those cell phones way more at home than they ever do in school. And that's where most of the behaviors, most of the issues we're aware of, start outside of school and then make their way in afterwards. Rarely does it ever start in school. And then some of the facilities work, as we've shared at previous board meetings, by next year, we hope to be completing the scheduled field, track, and fencing replacement here at the high school. So putting down new turf, resurfacing the track, and replacing the fencing that's essentially falling down. And hopefully, next year, we'll also be talking about the designing, planning, and awarding of the upcoming infrastructure project that will be up for public vote on January 28th. So that's a quick look at our district priorities, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Grace Chan to talk a little bit about what our budget's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. I just want to give a shout out to my team, Maureen, Karen, Debbie, and Matthew, because everything I do is a representation of my whole team, okay? So I'm going to start off with a little bit about the historical data of the district. Basically, I'm only going back five years. You'll see on the screen, the bottom line is the tax cap in red, and the percentages each year are aligned there, and the budget change from year to year is the blue line on top. And you'll notice that when the blue line is up there, like for instance, in the 4.94% year, the tax cap was only 1.49. So those years, the district had to make up the difference in revenue in other sources, which we will get into. But I just wanted to show you what happened in the last five years. And this you might be very familiar with, it's how do we calculate our tax cap? But I tried to summarize this because the formula is actually very long, and I don't want to bore you with it. Maybe there are some items that you wouldn't understand what's going on there. However, anyone who wants to know more about it, that is free to come and call me at the business office. I'll be happy to show off everything that we know. To start with, we always use the last year's approved actual tax levy, which in this case was $41,330,000. And then where we have to times it by the tax-based growth factor, which is specific to Putnam Valley. Every single district gets their own number, which is this 1.002. The reason that's specific to your district is because it's actually a factor based on the physical changes in the taxable property, such as new construction, homes, stores, and offices. It's not just the mere change of the assessed value of the property existing. Then after we multiply that, we come up with a subtotal, which is $41,413,000. To that, we would be subtracting is what they call the net prior year tax capital, capital exclusion, this $1,204,000. There's actually a few lines that go into this number. This is a number that was produced from last year. Then up to this point, we have the prior year's tax levy limit. Then the next thing that we multiply it by is what you call the allowable levy growth factor, the lesser of 2% or CPI. And this is what you read in the newspaper when people come and ask, "Why does the newspaper say it's 2% and our percentage is not 2%?" It's because the 2% the newspaper's talking about is this number right over here. And...
I'm just going to make an assumption.
Oh, sound...
Does it say, Dan? I didn't give you the sign.
That's what I was thinking.
This is the first time it's ever happened.
All right, it's done, Marissa.
So after we multiply by the 2%, and I'm just putting this in here now as an assumption based on what I'm reading in the newspaper about the economy, then we come up to this number of $41,012,000. To that, we have to add the current year capital exclusions. Again, this is several lines that go in here. This is part of where the debt service comes into place, when Dr. Luft talks about this in the capital improvements. We also subtract any building aid from here, and then we add back any capital exclusions, some BOSI's aids. There's a few lines that go into here. We don't have that number yet right now, which is why I put it as to be determined. That will help me decide what the 25-26 allowable tax levy is. If you notice, I have a little asterisk here because historically, Putnam Valley does not go to the actual total allowable tax cap. We go a little bit under that, okay? Which means we're not asking the taxpayers for everything we're allowed to. And then I usually show you a percentage change in the tax levy. This tax cap will be due March 1st, so prior to that, you will know the information that comes out of this. So the job of the business official and the tax, and our department, is to make sure that we come up with a balanced budget. So we work on the expenses, which we're doing already, which include instructional programs. We look at the administration, we look at supervision, we look at transportation, the facilities, and I think capital improvements. We come up with a number. When I come up with that number, then I go back to this side and see, okay, what's my allowable tax levy? Then we look at state aid, which at this point, we're not really sure what's happening with the foundation aid. It's another to-be-determined figure. Then we have miscellaneous local revenues. For example, when you invest in the NIE class, in the last year, there was a substantial amount of interest income that was earned. Where our hands are tied, we can't do things like invest in the stock market. We have to follow the school laws. The other thing that would be in your local revenue is like when you charge the tuition to the Garrison students that come here, that would be our local revenue that we gain. Then we have some fund balance that we can use to help balance this budget. So sometimes we will use that because we need to, to balance the budget because we can't ask the taxpayer for any more than what we were told in this allowable tax levy. And then finally, we have reserves, which are meant to be used specifically for what they were put away for. And I like to pull those out and use them because I think that that helps the expenses that went up, and we need to make sure that the budget is balanced. We would need the revenues from some of those reserves from year to year. It may change. So in the budget development, we have a lot of challenges that are pretty similar every year and pretty similar for most districts. First and foremost is the contractual salaries, which have an increase of anywhere from 2% to 6%. That's probably 75% of my budget, you know, because aligned with that are all the benefits that come with it. Then we have to contend with the inflation, which at this moment is not too bad. Inflation's about 2.7, but in March, it was 3.6. Tax cap is basically going to be around that 2%. And then we have the state aid foundation formula, which I said is going to be determined by what the governor decides. Then we have health insurance premium. The increase right now is closer to 3.9%. The pension rates, we already have, the ERS is at 16.5%. It's up from 15.1 last year, and the TRS is 10.11%. Most of these do go up. I have only seen one year where the TRS rate actually came down. Then we have special education costs, which are unknown. It's the increase between the in and out of district tuition. Transportation cost is going up. We have a contract, but I think I spoke to Dave Spittle with something like 3.5%. Then the last piece is that the ARP, federal stimulus funding, has already ended, where you were able to depend on that money as additional revenues to balance your budget that no longer exist. What's the next steps in the budget development? Well, we have to have a meetings, the cabinet will have meetings with the principals, we'll have to identify efficiencies to maximize savings, and I know in the business office, we have already started doing many things on this year. We are instituting educational data and timepiece, those are software programs that will work efficiently, and we'll need less people to do the work that we're currently doing. We'll be able to buy supplies at much lower rates because we're part of a consortium that will go out to bid for that. Then we will finalize personnel staffing, and then we will finalize the allowable tax cap, and then we will resolve the state aid, which is to be determined, and we'll finalize the budget, which will be due by March 13th. Another thing that's happening is the budget development top timeline. We have on these dates, these people, these departments will be coming to do presentations. So this is something that you might want to put on your calendar to tune into. Until the end, by May 20th, we'll have the vote. And we do this for the kids. Thank you.
Any questions?
When will we know our incoming kindergarten class?
So, the technical answer is Sept- So the technical answer is September 25. We, I could tell you already, there's 50-something students that have already registered, which is better than last year. We typically push for a big registration drive and start our screenings in February. So we typically get a few more students that sign up in order to make it through the screening process in February. But the reality is, is that's sort of, that's constantly a moving number. When we get to March, February, March, we're going to have to make a determination based upon sort of historical trends, what our anticipated staffing is going to be, so we know how to budget accordingly for that. So we had a really small class this current year, smaller than usual class the year before. So we're hoping to reverse that trend to start getting larger classes back in. But I think February timeline will have a better idea where we stand. But I do know, as of right now, we have about 50-something students. It was 50, but I know there's been a couple more since then, so that's where we stand right now.
I'm going to put you on the spot on something, and I don't expect you to know this number. If you do, I'll be impressed. From their enrollment, beginning of September to now, how much have we increased? Any idea?
Yeah, I don't know that number off the top of my head. I know we, COVID reversed the trend, which was neutral, right? We would lose 30 kids, we would gain 30 kids. We would lose 60 kids, we would gain 60 kids. After COVID, I think the 18 months after COVID, we gained 165 students, more than we lost. So that was certain, but those kids were spread out across 13 grade levels, not just all kindergarten students. It's my belief, since that, since that time, we've continually gained students, not at that same rate, but we definitely gained more students than we lose. They're just, again, spread out across many grade levels. I can, we do have that number. We track it on a spreadsheet. I just didn't look before we came. What is it?
97.
97. See, Dan's got access to it. That's how many we gained, but you don't know how many we lost.
No, I don't remember. That's how we gained, I don't know.
Okay. So it's 97 minus how many we lost. But it's this number of students who left the district is much smaller than that number.
Thank you. And Garrison students, when will we know that number?
So it's not official. We have been notified for sure that there is nine students that are committed. Maybe a 10th is coming on their way. So that would be 10 additional students on top of the 13 we had this year, and the three, I think, we were up to the year before. I know we gained some students after their freshman year. So that continues to far exceed our expectations. I know the first year, we were hoping for like just one brave soul, give us a shot. And we got two, and then we got a third one. And then the next year, we got 13 of like 18 kids, and we were like, holy smokes. We were ready for this. But we, I mean, I would take all of them. I would love the opportunity to. And I have to say, the feedback we get from them, we had the opportunity to go present the third board meeting. Obviously, they come here, they visit our schools. The feedback we get from both the Garrison students and the Garrison parents is they love the feel and the culture of our building. They love that our students are taking them on tours when they come for the parent evening. They love being able to partner up with our students and to get tours of their buildings. And those who are interested, I think we had 15 students who spent the entire day here in Putnam Valley shadowing a student. So that's a tremendous percentage of their students that are at least interested. So we hope that trend will continue. Transportation remains an issue for them. It's a long day. The way the transportation works for them is they essentially do high school runs like we would, and bring every kid back to Garrison, and then all of those students split up into three buses for a second bus run every morning. So they pick up all of their kids, they bring them back to the building, and then they get on either a Haldean, a Putnam Valley, or an O'Neill bus for the next step of it. Now we have students that are in sports, now they have late buses. So distance is an issue. I'm actually really curious to see what happens when like that large group of 13 start becoming seniors and driving, and are they taking the juniors with them? And I feel like that would alleviate a lot of the transportation concerns that they have. Are we going strong?
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, one more question. Grace, you mentioned the district operations efficiencies. Will that information be included in one of these budget discussions?
Probably not. That's already in place right now, and we're pulling it up. But I can answer any questions you have. One of the vendors that I brought in is Educational Data, which a lot of districts have that, and it's a bunch of school districts that they represent and go out to bid for everything. So we're already buying those supplies, but now we're going to get a much lower rate. And also, the way that we buy it will be done very efficiently, because once we have purchased everything the first year, the records will be there, and it'll be online website. Teachers won't have to put all their orders in before they rush out for the summer holidays. What happens is that, once the budget is passed, we would open that up. It's a separate website, and it's web-based, so they don't even have to be here. Then they start ordering what they want, and they will have a limit that was placed on that by their principal, and then it will go directly to the principal to approve, and then it'll come into the business office. And then when it's all approved, this bulk order happens in the summer. All the POs are created by the company, so no, none of the work is happening on our end any longer. Whereas, we used to have to show that we would get three quotes, find the lowest price. This is the lowest price. So we won't have to have the main office secretaries do any of that work. And then, every year, at the end of the year, they will prove to you that you saved money. And I brought this in at many districts, and I'm really thrilled that this is something that's going to happen this year. So this is already happening as an efficiency model for us. The other thing that I have been bringing in, and we're almost there, is the Timepiece, which is the mechanism to pay people overtime, whereas you currently pay them by having time sheets signed physically by everyone, and then at the end of the day, the superintendent signs them all, and it's a pile like this. That's being taken away, and it's done electronically now. It also will speed up the process that the payroll person will be able to pay people on time. Right now, it's a mad dash to get all those papers in, figure it out, put it into the system. There's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes after somebody hands the paper in. It's all done in the business office and the administrators who have to sign this. And sometimes, when they don't get to it, it holds her up, and she can't pay the payroll. And that includes people who don't even get overtime. So that's been a stress on her. She's planning to retire in two years, and I need to make that job very streamlined so that whoever replaces it, I mean, we have to use technology. We're already in 2025. So those are two things, and trying to slow down what else we do, because it's a big change for a little district when you've had the opportunity to do things in a different way for so long. But honestly, in all the districts that have much more students and teachers and personnel, it can't be done this way, and it isn't. So that's why they created this thing, that's Timepiece, and we're already on board. We started this process back in July already, and we're almost ready to roll it out.
Right out of the gate. Thank you. And the first time I jumped in front of Sam, so go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, thank you. Real quickly, I was a little alarmed to see the one post of salaries 2% to 6%. I have to tell you, 6% is not tenable in this economy within our community. Where did that come from?
So they're contractual, it includes step. So they're contractually increases. So as you know, like, teachers go up a percent over the year, and they go up a step. So there are salary increases when you consider--
So this incorporates the step--
The percentage and the step.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Right, so the contract-to-contract, or year-to-year increase is more like 2%, but there's also a step that has to be figured in. Some budgetary standpoint, we have to budget a 6% increase.
It wasn't clear the way it was put--
Right.
Because it seemed to me that somebody's base--
I made her change it. She had 2%. So--
Yeah, somebody's base was 6%, and I'm saying, who do we pay at 6% a year?
Based upon last year, we also gave the full percentage, which was percentage and step. I didn't want to be, I didn't want it to go the other way and say, we said everyone's only getting a 2% raise--
No, no, I understand that.
And then if you do the math, you see that people are getting much larger raises.
You may, for transparency purposes, you may want to state, base salary around 2% and then step.
Salary, so we could have that.
So people understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chen.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for bringing some, just fresh perspective to the business office about ways in which that they can be more efficient and work smarter, not harder. I think that's just great, the creativity that's gone into it. Yes, we are in the century we're in, and sometimes we just do things the same old way, because that's the way they've been done, and we're comfortable with that. And change can be good, so thank you so much. That's great.
I've received very positive feedback about what I've rolled out so far.
Keep going. Good job. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just lining up for the next one.
So our next presentation is the first reading of the policy, 207-5, Maintaining District Neutrality on Non-School-Related Matters.
So I could just provide a quick overview. I don't know if we intended on reading the policy. I'll lose my voice before I get to the bottom of it, so someone else will have to do that. So this policy is just really meant, and I appreciate Mr. Farr for bringing up a way to look at it that I can't say that I've considered, so now I want to reread it through that lens of, are we, is the policy precluding us from doing other things that we typically do do? So I'll certainly reread it to make sure that's not the case. But really, what this policy is meant to do is to capture what we have said time and time and time again in public meetings, that every employee's personal life is their personal life, and their professional life is their professional life, and never shall the two cross, especially when it comes to talking about controversial issues, political, social, or economic issues. So it's an understanding, it's our practice, it's something that everyone's aware of. We talk about it from new employee orientation through the year they retire. But we didn't really have a policy that pulled out all of that into one succinct piece. And that's really what the intention of this policy is. This isn't a change in practice, this is what we're already doing, but this is essentially codifying what it is that we practice, which is, there's personal beliefs, religious, political, social, don't have a place in school, and unless it's directly tied to the curriculum, should not be a topic of conversation amongst our students and staff.
The, again, the force of this is comparing a regular phone call to a text message. I got a phone call, and I didn't understand it, you know? Ah, but I got a text message, it's in print. Now I understand it. This is important. We need this in writing for all our employees and, you know, school district-related officials to understand that this is our district policy on neutrality, on non-school-related matters. And Joe, I do not believe it will stop us from recognizing our veterans or our EMS people. They're part of our community, and to show respect for them, I don't think that interferes at all. But as Dr. Luff said, he'll reread it. I've read it quite a few times. I like it. I think this is what we need, something in writing that's there, that's, we can send people to and take a look at it. This is our district policy. This is important. And I thank you, Dr. Luff, for preparing this.
Students, what do you, how do you feel about teachers being neutral, or students being neutral? And still having opinions? I mean, like, how does that? How do you feel about--
Like between student-teacher opinions? Like between the student and the teacher?
Well, yeah, or students in class, or teachers in class, or--
Well, I think that any political, religious, or any beliefs that they have should be kept, well, obviously, outside the classroom and outside a conversation between a student and a teacher--
I agree.
Because I just don't think there's any room for that in the classroom, especially with everyone having different beliefs nowadays. I think it could strike problems within the classrooms and the community, unless it's a part of the curriculum that's been assigned.
Okay.
That's what I feel about.
Yeah, I feel it's hard, because there are some things that are put out there, and you never know where anyone's getting their information either. So having unwarranted conversations about specific political views and things like that in a classroom is just not an appropriate setting for some of those conversations. And I think that this is definitely important in making sure that staff members know this.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Great insight.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So maybe we all need to reread this before we read it out loud and make sure--
No, I think, as is, I would really like to adopt this tonight. The longer we wait, you know, we can have an individual come to us and say, I never knew about this. Where's your policy that states that we need to be neutral in the classroom? We don't have it. This is it. We need this on the books, tonight. We've been dancing around this issue now about three, four months. This has to be part of our policies. This is important. We need this neutrality, especially in the classroom. We can't risk that, boy, that slippery slope.
And Sam, it's on the agenda tonight to approve the first reading--
Right.
And in two weeks, it'd be on the agenda for the final.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. Let's not stall it. Let's do that and approve the first reading, and then, you know, if somebody sees any changes on this, I don't see any changes. I think this is excellent, and our two students certainly represent this point of view. We need to have this on the books, so that an individual can't come to us and say, I didn't know about this. What are you talking about? You spoke about it. When did you speak about it? Like I said, a phone call means nothing. You have it in writing, like a text or an email. That means something. We need this in the books, really. I'm very adamant about this.
I haven't heard anything that would lead me to believe that we wouldn't continue on the path we're already on, right? We approve the first reading now, and then that'll line us up, as we typically do, to approve it at the next meeting. It would be, then it would be in the books, so--
That would be--
I don't think there's, even if we made changes, we can make changes between the first and second reading, so I agree with you. I think it's in pretty good shape, but I have no problem with taking another look at it. But that, again, if that was the case, we made changes, we could do another first reading, and then waive the second reading next meeting to not slow it up anymore.
Dr. Luff, can you just review the policy distribution, what the plan would be for that?
So, I mean, obviously, all policies are available to anyone in the community online. They're also embedded within our student, some of them are embedded with our student and faculty handbook. So our intention for this policy would be to embed it in the next printing of our faculty handbook. So faculty handbooks handed out each year, or signed off by faculty each year, and that would be our way to receive sort of authorization that everyone's aware of it. Another policy we spoke about doing was, once the board adopts new policies, so we're finishing up our complete review of all policies, once we finish our code of conduct. And as the board continues its policy review process, our plan is to then send out updated policies as they come along to faculty and staff, and that'll be our way to keep them up to date of any changes. We can't do that when you're changing hundreds of pages at a time, like we have been this year. But once we get to just the revision process, that's our intention, is that we will continue to update them policy by policy as they change moving forward. But in this case, we anticipate this being part of the faculty handbook, and certainly something we could send out to faculty and staff via email.
Will there be a conversation around this with faculty, so that they understand the intent and the spirit behind it? I think it's clearly written, but someone else may not.
Right.
And I think that that's important, because it can be a place of sensitivity for some people, and I think that they just understand that we are, we are doing our due diligence as public employees. We are protecting all of the students in our building, all of the faculty members in our building, by remaining neutral when we're in our positions of official district capacity.
Exactly.
And I think that that's, that is the spirit of this. I think that that just needs to be clearly communicated, that that's what this is about. And I do think that it would be good to have a conversation in that light, if possible. If that's not advisable, then that's fine, but I think that it should be more than just distribution.
Sure. So I have no problem of having a conversation with my building principals about incorporating this into an upcoming faculty meeting. It's my honest opinion, I don't think there'll be one inkling of surprise from staff. This is what they've been told since the day they were hired. This is what their expectations are day to day. Maybe the only surprise may be that it's not already a policy. So I don't expect there to be really much pushback or surprise amongst anyone. But I have no problem of-- Letting the computer go to sleep. I feel like I should know the password, but I don't. How is it written in front of me? Sorry. If you don't want me to know, you shouldn't print it on the computer. This is not a typical meeting, I apologize. You know, we get a couple weeks off, all of a sudden, the wheels are falling off, batteries are dying, computers are going to sleep. So yeah, I think there'll be no surprise amongst faculty and staff, but I have no problem of finding another way to make sure they understand really what the intention of this policy is.
Okay.
And again, it's important to have it in writing. We don't, and that's why this is necessary.
I agree.
Good. Thank you, again, Dr. Love.
Thank you.
Okay. While you're there, you want to do the calendar discussion?
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, so this evening, we're going to talk about the first draft of next year's school calendar. So, this calendar is always is based off of the draft BOSI's calendar that we were provided. We want to be as in line and in sync with BOSI's as possible because we obviously share students between those two institutions. And BOSI serves as sort of the model for all of the districts in the region to help standardize when instruction takes place. This is a pretty typical calendar. There's not a lot of surprises. At the end of the day, once we meet our 186-day contractual requirement, it leaves us about two days that are sort of floating vacation days, or floating recess days, and when they may be utilized. So, we'll talk a little bit about those when we get there. As we have for many years now, we would start the year August 27, 28, superintendent's conference days. We would give faculty and staff the Friday off to extend the Labor Day weekend. In September, we have schools opening the Monday after Labor Day. We have the Rosh Hashanah holiday. In October, Yom Kippur and Columbus Day. November, our typical conference day during Election Day, as well as Veterans Day and our Thanksgiving recess. So, in December, you'll notice, this calendar reflects school recess days on December 22nd and 23rd. In this calendar, that's where those two sort of floating recess days have been placed. That would give faculty and staff and students two full weeks off for the December break. Alternatives to this calendar would involve making the 22nd and 23rd instructional days, and then moving those recess days somewhere else in the calendar. So, if you're wondering, like, well, what would happen if we add this day? Those are the two days from this calendar that would sort of be up for grabs. December 22nd and 23rd, we could have the first day off to be Christmas Eve on the 24th. And some schools are doing that. Then we have MLK in January. Our February break is typical. Superintendent's Conference Day actually coincides with Eid in March for any students that celebrate that. April, spring break is early, so from the end of March, the first week in April. And then we have Memorial Day, and then the last day, Juneteenth on the 19th, with an anticipated last day of school being the 26th of June. As always, the give-back days would be four of those days during the spring break. Everyone except for Good Friday, which we have contractual obligations to give off. And if snow days, there's two give-back days. If we utilize those snow days, those give-back days are always around Memorial Day. So, it would be the Friday before and then Tuesday after. And if we only have one snow day, it would just be the Friday before. 182 student days, four superintendent's conference days, a total of 186 total days. Questions, comments?
Suggestion. On the 22nd and 23rd of December, you could put one of those days on Wednesday, the 26th of November, as you did this year. And the other day, put it on the 22nd of May, which in the past, we've done before, had the Friday and the Monday off for Memorial Day.
Or the Monday after Easter.
Or the Monday after Easter, right.
Those are all possibilities.
Yeah.
This is just based upon, obviously, both our CSCE and our teachers' union gave feedback when they would request, but it's ultimately the board's decision. The board sets the academic calendar for the school year.
What is BOSI's doing? Do we know what their calendar looks like?
BOSI's is a little different because they're giving days, religious holidays off that we haven't had the same requests for. They're closed for Diwali and for Eid. So, that's, those two extra days, that's how BOSI's is utilizing them.
I see.
This, I think it was last school year, there was a little bit of a conflict between Passover and Easter, and the way the dates fell. Has that been looked at?
Yeah, and this calendar year, I know more than I looked at it. It falls during the April break.
Yes, I think it's.
The spring break, so, yeah. This year captures both Easter and beginning of Passover. Oh, yes, and the Lunar New Year, which is a New York State required holiday, falls on a Saturday this school year. So, there's no obligation to give an additional day off for it. So, that's one day you typically would see. That's not on this year's calendar. I have to say, BOSI's went forward and did the next few years. The 26, 27 calendar is going to be interesting. Labor Day is very late. It's like the 6th or 7th of September.
Yeah.
We'll likely be looking to bring students back prior to Labor Day because if not, you're going to run out of days really quick. We would lose our February break or our spring break almost in its entirety.
Is it possible to bring back the suggestion of giving them the Wednesday off for Thanksgiving and the Friday off for Memorial Day to our employees and see how they react to that? And the reason I'm saying that, that's two straight days right before that long break, and it is a long break. I thought it was great that we brought our people back for Thursday and Friday, right after the break. And speaking to some of the teachers, because I attended the senior alumni thing.
You weren't here getting yelled at like I was.
No, they.
Why are we back?
No, they said, you know, this really gives us time to ease into that, you know, to kind of phase into the school year again.
So, I don't think there's any need to bring it back to the unions. When I meet with them, we just, they know the options, right? They're well aware of what the options are.
I mean, myself, as, you know, working here before, I would have loved to have that Wednesday off guaranteed almost every year because that really helps for Thanksgiving. And then Memorial Day, it's summer. You want to get away, and to do it on a three-day, it's, given the Friday, it would really, I think, be beneficial.
So, I don't disagree with Wednesday before Thanksgiving because that's a long day. But you have to think from a parent's lens. Giving off the 22nd and possibly the 26th and the 27th, that's a lot of days those parents have to take off of work for the kids if they're not in school.
Well, what was?
You mentioned May 22nd. And if we have to give back snow days, that would then would be, I assume, the 26th and the 27th.
Correct.
So, that's three days.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, that's just a hardship on families sometimes that we have to keep in mind.
I think that all of these ideas are great. I will say, I did hear a lot about the two-day comeback versus the five-day comeback being a much better transition than the five-day. But again, some people really wish they had had the two weeks off during the holiday season. So, you know, I think that it really is what our employees need. And if it works out well for children, I mean, that's number one always, but I think all of these options pretty much do, with the exception of that consideration for May. Maybe we want to double think that, just based on the snow day piece. And perhaps the Monday after Easter being a consideration for another option, which, like, if you host Thanksgiving or Easter, the Wednesday and the Monday matter. So, I will just say that publicly.
That's a good point.
You know.
I would have no problem.
That was the decision that was made this year. The reason we came back the Thursday and Friday, if you look at this year's calendar, was we had those two extra days being the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Monday after Easter.
Right.
But that was what the unions had preferred for this year.
I have no problem with the Monday after Easter or that Wednesday. So, yeah, you're right, Jeanette. I agree with you about the Memorial Day. Not a good idea.
Right.
Because it's snow days. But the Monday after Easter and that extra Wednesday, Thanksgiving, for me, if I were working here, I'd love that.
Yes, you would.
But I don't work here anymore.
And if you were cooking, you would love it even more.
This is the easiest thing I do all year long. It doesn't matter. As long as the numbers add up. I don't care what days you pick.
Yeah, and I don't think it's too challenging for parents. I think it's very similar to what we have done in the past, and also to what surrounding districts do, so. Those options seem good.
I agree.
So, maybe what we'll do is we'll draft a second calendar that has the 22nd and 23rd as being instructional days.
Yeah.
Adds the 26th of November and the 6th of April as days off.
Right.
And then the board can essentially vote between the two next meeting, and then we'll adopt a calendar at the next meeting.
Will you get, you'll get input from the unions about?
I don't think I need to. I mean, they're welcome to. I've already met with them both. We discussed all of the options beforehand.
Okay.
This reflects what the request was, but I don't know that either was strong or passionate about this versus what you guys are suggesting. I have no problem with reaching out to them and seeing if they have feedback on it. This, I typically go with what they request because it makes my life easier than.
If this is what they prefer for next year, then I would ask the board to consider that we give that to them because it's not any easier or harder on parents either way. It's going to be what it's going to be. The days are the number of days. And I think what they, what our employees need right now for their breaks is the better decision to make, so.
I have no problem. We'll create the other, the second option. I'll send both options to both our CSCE and our teachers' union, and I'll just ask them if they.
Have a preference.
A, B, or indifferent between the two, and then I'll just share that information. One may pick A, the other one may pick B, and the board's still going to have to decide. But I have no problem with sharing that information.
It would be my guess that a lot of people didn't realize that, you know, utilizing the 22nd, 23rd for the Thanksgiving and the Easter break, you know, might have even been an option. So, they may have just looked at this and said, "Oh, wow, two straight weeks."
To reset Christmas.
Yeah, right. And now, given that other option to extend Thanksgiving and Easter, you know, the Passover Easter break, I think they may jump at that. But I don't know.
So, essentially, our conversation is Friday before Memorial Day, Monday after Easter, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, Christmas break, pick two. So, they're well aware of what all the options are.
The yucky part of this is that Christmas Eve is the.
Christmas Eve would be the first day off.
Right, and that's where I think the two weeks matters to people, so.
Some of the concern is, what's the instructional, what's the academic rigor on the 22nd and 23rd of December? Leading up to Christmas.
The same type of rigor that we had the Thursday and Friday when we came back.
At least the holidays were past us at that point. Again, I have no problem of coming up with a second option and sharing it, and I'll provide whatever feedback I receive from the unions before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, don't adopt it tonight at this table where you get that resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move to new business.
Okay. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of computer support specialist Laura Shorewood from the district effective the close of business on March 31st, 2025, for the purpose of retirement, as per document 100/25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
I second very reluctantly.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, it's going to be a great loss. Laura's been a steadfast advocate of all things technical and computer-based, and it's been a great resource. I remember when I was at the middle school, how important her role was in getting the kids to get used to the laptops when we first, Ed Halas, he first brought that into the district. So, she's been a real star in that, and will be greatly missed.
How difficult is it to fill that position in March? Difficult?
I would imagine, really.
Very.
Yike.
So, I do want to acknowledge, obviously, Laura will be a tremendous loss to the school district. I know this is something that she was not looking forward to doing, something that she really thought long and hard about before making the decision. But I, having once lived in the technology world, have the greatest respect and appreciation for the technology staff we have here in Putnam Valley and the amazing things that they can do from the hardware side to the software side, to the data side. I just, I want everyone to understand, in some districts, that's three people that Laura and Dan and Alex and everyone else does in this district, one per building. So, Laura will certainly be a tremendous loss. It'll be nearly impossible to fill the shoes she leaves behind. And we'll see. We hope we get a strong candidate, someone who is willing to put in the effort to match her success she's had here in the middle school.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of campus monitor Denise Pellegrino from the district effective the close of business December 20th, 2024, as per document number 111-25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Putnam Valley Middle School teacher Daniella Mary from the district effective March 31st, 2025, as per document number 114-25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? I think it's always hard to lose somebody in the middle of the year, or, you know.
She, right. She's actually, she's been out of maternity leave. She's made the decision to resign to stay home with her kids, so. We have the teacher who's been in her place for the beginning of the school year will remain in her place for the remainder of the school year. So, actually, in this case, there'll be no interruption for the students.
Okay, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Stephanie Schalb from the district effective the close of business on January 15th, 2025, as per document 116/25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Along the same notes, Stephanie is completing her teaching certification and needs to complete her student teaching portion. So, she's been fantastic for us. We would welcome her back in a second, but she needs this time to complete her certification so she can become a certified teacher. Sure.
Best of luck.
And she's going to stay in the district, right? She's doing her student teaching?
I would have to get back to you. I'm not sure if she's doing it here.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Roseanne Brackett to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on February 3rd, 2025, and terminating on February 2nd, 2029, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step seven of the CSEA salary schedule. Ms. Brackett holds teaching assistant level three certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lisa Jennings to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective January 6th, 2025, with a probationary 52 weeks, January 5th, 2026, at the elementary school on step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the appointment of Melissa Clements, approved at the business meeting of December 12th, 2024, as follows. Appoint Melissa Clements to a six-month leave replacement position as a special education teacher at the elementary school effective January 6th, 2025, through June 30th, 2025, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education on step one MA of the PBFT salary schedule. Ms. Clements holds students and disabilities B through birth two and one six, initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
She was originally appointed at the daily rate of pay pending receiving her certification, so we received confirmation of her credentials, and now she'll be moving on to that step.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint the first reading of policy 2075, Maintaining District Neutrality on Non-School-Related Matters, as per document number 110-25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. We are going to table number nine.
Could I make a request for number nine? We never ask the students' input, what they think.
Sure.
Do you have the calendar in front of you? You heard the recommendations that were made to take those first two days of the Christmas holiday and put one at Thanksgiving, one at Easter, or Memorial Day. What's your preference? What would be your preference?
And that happened this year, this calendar so far, right?
Well, it's very similar to what happened this year, except for this year, we came back for the Thursday, Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that was great. I mean, me personally, when I came back on the Thursday, Friday, it got me into the ease of everything without having to do the long-awaited five-day comeback as opposed to the two-day and then have the weekend to really come back to the school and get a, you know, get back into things. I mean, it was pretty various between other students. I mean, that was my personal opinion, some people wanted the longer break. But I don't think it really has too much of an effect on students rather than it does staff and everyone above.
I think it was nice, actually, that we did come back because we came back to a block schedule. So we were actually able to get stuff done in our 80-minute classes rather than just coming back on a Monday and kind of doing, oh, what did you do over the break? And do more, we actually were able to complete certain things. I mean, I had a quiz on Monday when we came back for a test because we went over the material in the 80-minute block.
Ah, good.
So the big difference next year is you're coming back to a five-day block.
Yeah, that's your problem.
The two days fall at the front of the, front end of the vacation.
But I think the same thing, those two days give you time to, you know, all the friendship things that go on prior to a long holiday like that would be taken care of. And then you come back and boom, you're fresh.
Well, the day before was also well-needed too, before the Thanksgiving.
I agree with that.
I think that was very efficient. Yes, I agree.
Especially if you cook, yeah, as Crystal said.
My daughter did.
I would say it was baking pies left and right.
I just want to say, my daughter did also mention coming back to a block schedule was a dream for her. So I don't know, maybe we should consider that regardless on the day that we come back. Maybe we can do block scheduling on Day 1s and 1 and 2. Mr. Mellow, if you're listening.
Thank you, thank you.
Motion to table it next.
Okay, so.
Motion to table it next.
So moved to table. The next meeting.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, Maureen.
So public comment on any topic? Oh, Joe.
Still Joe Ferraro, still living in Putnam Valley. Just more on the policy. I'm full in favor of the policy, pretty much as written. I just, I'm thinking about as devil's advocate and unintended consequences. Something that comes to mind is why are we doing a pledge of allegiance in a classroom? Because that is not educational and, you know, tied to, I mean, so somebody could argue that, right? So that would be something that might be an unintended consequence that a parent or a group could be, this does not fit within curriculum. Why are we doing it in a classroom being directed by the school? Not my, my problem, just a matter of thinking outside of, just kind of all the things we assume would be the right thing are not necessarily for everybody going to be the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay, upcoming meetings.
So I just looked at my sheet and I saw the things that I skipped during my presentation. So before I talk about upcoming meetings, I'll talk about some upcoming events. So our science research has their PowerPoint practice night, I believe, next Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So I know that's coming up, our science research PowerPoint practice night is coming up. I spoke about our superintendent's listening hour at the high school, 6:00 PM next Wednesday. High school band concert, 7:00 PM next Wednesday. The elementary school PTA fun fair is scheduled for Saturday, January 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And I had mentioned the fourth grade winter concert the following Wednesday, the 22nd, at 7:00 PM. And the next board meeting presentation is scheduled for January 23rd. And that is our combined curriculum instruction presentation facilitated by Ms. Jackie Levine, co-facilitated by our building principals. So they will all be here, curriculum instruction budget, next meeting.
Plus, there's a PTA meeting on the 13th.
Yes.
Yes, right.
General PTA meeting.
I heard the superintendent will be there to talk about the capital project. It's a busy week next year.
No doubt.
Okay. Board member comments?
Just want to, again, compliment our music department every which way to Sunday. The elementary, the middle school, and last night, the high school chorus was phenomenal. They did, you know, works from Les Misabre, the play, and Saigon, Miss Saigon excerpts from that, and some really outstanding musical renditions. A lot of spiritual and folk stuff that I just love. My only recommendation is they need to do Look to the Rainbow, from Finian's Rainbow in Spring, right? We're going to advocate for that. Look, look, look to the rainbow. Follow it over the hills and, I love that song.
Now we're definitely doing it.
Really, we have.
I wish I took a picture of the girl's face.
I wish I would have recorded that.
We can watch this over and over again. And we could zoom in on the faces.
We have a phenomenal arts and music department here, and it's just so prideful.
Well, I'm always, I didn't go on dealing with other issues, but I'm always impressed by the variety.
Yes.
Music from other cultures, from other countries, from other eras. You know, it's, it's just the variety. And it allows students to see all the possibilities that are available in music. So I think our music department is amazing.
It is magnificent.
Another piece of that, though, is like our theater tech department. I just want to give Suzie a shout out. She's just so great with our kids. And she certainly has put my daughter to work and she loves every moment of it. How she did that, I have no idea. But she really, kids gravitate to her and she really teaches them and she's on them and she reminds them and she's teaching them about those executive functioning things, time management. You got to be here on time, you can't be late, they're depending on you. I mean, it's just really beautiful what happens in that theater overall. So I don't want to forget the people who are behind the scenes, making those shows really possible. So thank you so much to Suzie and all the work that she does there.
Any other comments?
Not that, not since the last meeting. We, Jeremy, Dr. Lefter mentioned the elementary school sing-along, the holiday sing-along right before school was out, and they did a wonderful job. And the district office, employees like Mike played in the band.
Or in the house band?
Yeah, and they just did an amazing job, it really got you into the spirit of the holidays.
They did such a fantastic job, we let them go home an hour early.
I missed it because it was at 10 and I couldn't get there at 10. I wanted to attend that because I love it. Those kids and Dr. Podesta comes in, just waves their hand, it's like magic. They sit down, they're quiet, and then they get into it, you know, it's really great.
I would tell you who to blame, but I have to go to a meeting with all of them tomorrow. Because Putnam Valley was open for the full day. Till the last minute. Needless to say, there is absolutely no snow. And no reason to dismiss an hour early. So I apologize to those parents whose days we ruined.
It's okay.
And the sing-along messed up the timing of the sing-along.
It's okay.
If you had a crystal ball.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Outstanding and happy new year. Good.